...interests and the general nature thereof. Seeing none, first up, I'd like to have a moment of reflection. At the beginning of this council meeting, we paused to think about the needs of our community. May we show wisdom and compassion in all our decisions. First up is delegations. I don't think Joanne is here yet, so we're going to go with REAP Green Solutions Annual Report and Update. Mary Jane Patterson and Dave Blake, welcome.
Thank you very much. We bought you an update last. As you know, I'm the Executive Director at REAP Green Solutions and Dave Blake is our Energy and Business Development Manager. And we're pleased to tell you what we've been up to and what we're looking ahead to. If you've ever wondered how to describe REAP in a nutshell, we are an environmental charity and we help people live sustainably. And we do that through programs that focus on climate change, in particular residential energy and water efficiency and stormwater management. And where we can, we do those through as social enterprise, fee for service, as well as funded programs. The core funding that we receive from these four local partners makes a huge difference in our ability to do that, to stay afloat and to bring programs to the city of Waterloo. The core funding of these local partners covers half of our core costs and then we strive to make up the rest of those costs through our programs and services. Some years we make it and some years we don't. And then we adjust accordingly. And we just would like to say how critical it is to have funding from partners like Waterloo North Hydro. That makes a tremendous difference to us. We want to share with you a little bit about our new strategic plan. In the process of creating it, we realized we could boil down what we do to three short words. Show people how to live sustainably. Do something that we're going to be doing more of, not only showing people but helping them do it or being hired by them to do it for them or hired by somebody else to do it, but not only giving people the tools and the knowledge, but helping them make it happen. And connect. Connect people to programs, either ours or other programs in the community. Ultimately, our job is to help people overcome barriers to action. We realized also that we really should make more of our charitable status and I think you'll see that more in the communications you see from us going forward. It has to start with us and how we define ourselves. And then we need to think and act more like an environmental charity and build support for our work in that way. That might be a way to help cover those gaps in our balance at the end of the year, a little bit more than we have been.
So diving into some of our program areas, we're particularly pleased to tell you that the Province of Ontario has provided more money for the Union Gas Incentive Program. The incentives have increased. They've actually doubled in value from $2,500 total to $5,000. And in new development, it also is extended to homes that are heated with oil and propane and wood, so anything with a fossil fuel. REAP really fought hard for this through delegations to the provincial budget consultation, through media releases when the province announced more money back in February. But we asked them to extend this to all homes in the province regardless of the heating fuel. The chart you'll see in front of you talks to the number of tons of carbon reduced by Waterloo residents that have not only had an energy evaluation, they've actually made changes in their home and had a follow-up evaluation in order to be able to calculate that. We anticipate and expect a greater number of participants now that these incentives have been increased and that they extend to other home heating fuels as well. The bottom chart is the economic impact. So these are actual numbers, actual dollar figures that homeowners invested in their homes to make those changes. The number for 2016 is from the beginning of the year till the end of August, $109,000. And we've already seen an additional $30,000 of economic impact for other work that homeowners have done since the end of the month. This shows the economic impact of the work we do. It's about the materials. It's about keeping the money here in this community. It doesn't include the dollars saved for the homeowners. It also doesn't include the incentive value, which was approximately $20,000 in 2016 alone for those homeowners. So all in all, it's good for the local economy, this type of work and making these changes in their homes. Last year, we presented to you that we had funding for a Home Energy Coach through Natural Resources Canada to pilot that coaching service. The pilot has finished. It was successful and it was great learning for us to understand how to move homeowners forward. In the short time of the program, 51 homeowners were engaged as part of this. They were coached. Many more took part in workshops as well as participated with our Home Energy 101 lessons that are still available for homeowners on our website today. We've now transitioned that service from being funded through Natural Resources Canada being a fee for service and so far we've seen a modest uptake, but expect that to continue into the fall. We're also very proud to be delivering home water efficiency audits on behalf of the region of Waterloo. About a quarter of the 400 audits that we've completed so far have been for residents of the city of Waterloo. It's also an example of how we're transitioning from the show to do. We went to the region and asked for a pilot of 100 homes where we would actually be going in and installing those measures, not just advising them. So installing the showerheads, installing the flapper valves, installing the aerators. And we just completed that pilot about a week or so ago and the preliminary reports into the region. And certainly, once that's been released, we'd be happy to share that with you. We were very happy with the results that we saw. We're also very pleased to be one of many organizations who helped to organize what we understand is the biggest federal climate change consultation, which was held in the Chicago, in the Kitchener Rotunda, you know, a few weeks back. There's about 300 people throughout the region who happened to be there, providing their ideas of how to address climate change. Our message to the city is that we're into you, is that we are here to help you with any type of undertakings that you're looking to with respect to greenhouse gas reductions and emissions within the community.
I'll tell you a little bit about the rain program now, the stormwater management program that we have. It's been operating at a rather modest level in Waterloo this summer as the city develops its stormwater master plan. Our door-to-door campaign did take place and we expanded our outreach into areas outside the uptown core to neighborhoods with aging stormwater ponds and infrastructure like Old Abbey, Westvale, and north of Conservation. The REAP campaigners helped to broaden awareness of the stormwater credits and set the stage for future work in these neighborhoods by city staff. Working with City of Waterloo Stormwater Staff, we also applied to a federal grant together to go deeper into one or two neighborhoods. We weren't successful this time, but we'll keep looking for opportunities to leverage the city's resources. And I just want to give you an example of what that can look like. We've been working this year in Kitchener where we had a successful grant to Trillium Foundation for $439,000 over three years to go deeper into two neighborhoods and work with the residents to solve stormwater flooding problems together. Kitchener's putting in $75,000 over the three years and so they're receiving a return of $6 on every dollar that the city invests. And that's an example of the way we can help leverage city resources and we want to invite staff to keep their eyes open, and we will too, for opportunities to work together with We just want to make sure you know that our programs align directly with the city's own goals, especially as outlined in the new strategic plan. We are strengthening energy security for the city and climate resilience through citizen action. We're engaging residents in taking environmental leadership themselves, addressing energy and water on both an individual and a neighborhood scale increasingly. And as an aside, we expect that our work will also align well with the neighborhood strategy that the city's developing. We've seen good results so far in our stormwater work that goes at a neighborhood level and we're now thinking about what a neighborhood-level approach might look like for energy efficiency. So I expect we'll soon be looking for funding and partners to pilot something with us like Energy Smart Neighborhoods, something like that. Economic development, Dave made that point for you and connected the dots about the way the work we do stimulates the economy. Ultimately, it helps to build a future-ready, forward-looking community that people want to live in.
The financial report for REAP can be found in detail on page 14 of your annual report. We've included our actual results for the past three years. We chose to include this graphic in part to highlight that for the second consecutive fiscal year, our fee-for-service revenue has made up more than 50% of our revenue. This is a number that we are proud of as it demonstrates that we are able to take any of our funding sources and more than double their value in programs for the residents of Waterloo and throughout the region. It should be noted that the 19% of the local funding from our core funders was at its highest level from a percentage of revenue perspective over the past year, highlighting how important that was during our past fiscal year. We expect that in this fiscal year, it should revert back to the historical average of around 15% of our revenue.
So with that, we'd like to thank you and to say a very special thank you also to the city staff that we work with every week for their support. And we want to leave you with a question. When you are meeting with your constituents, what do you see is missing that's helping people take environmental action? We would love to know what the gaps are that we can help you with. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Thank you, Mary Jane, too. Questions or comments from council on this? Council Durrell and then Council Henry.
Yes, well, so thank you for coming here today. I am actually a board member on REAP, a proud board member on REAP. This is an amazing organization that is making a difference in our community. So thanks for your hard work. I know it's been a rough couple of years just with all the transitions that are happening with funding and et cetera. What a great way to go from summer to fall. You're doing an amazing job and thank you for making our community better.
Council Henry.
And similar on a comment vein, it's always good to see both of you here. I appreciate the highlights that you've provided in terms of the importance of local sources as well as some of the new work that you're able to do working with neighborhoods and hopefully that's something that we can help you deepen. I know that particularly on the stormwater credit side, that scenario where we've seen variance from budget, that would certainly be very much helped by people taking more action. And you folks are exactly the right people to help us make that work. And I know our staff have been pleased to go out with you and I hope that we can keep making things like that happen. The other thing I just wanted to say, you probably already know this, but in front of others, over on the Waterloo North Hydro side, new targets from the Ontario Energy Board in terms of conservation demand management, they are very much stretched targets for the local distribution companies to be able to hit, but Hydro's made some investments and some new staff to really help drive CDM. And so there's some new resources in place that are looking to have new clients and customers to jump in. So hopefully that's a further opportunity for partnership on the energy-efficient neighborhood side and anything that we can help do in driving that message home. I'm sure we'd be able to help do because there's lots of things we can't control and help people with, but if this is something that collectively as a community, we can help people manage some costs to get through challenging times they may have, but also do something great for the environment. We know you have the right partners for that job. So thank you very much for everything that you do, day in, day out.
And Council Freeman, please.
Matthew Majaurski. Just with regard to the matching or the grant program, so if people want to find out information about how to participate in that, do they have to have an audit done before and after the changes?
Yes. Yeah, there has to be an initial evaluation that's done to sort of set the baseline as to where they are and then, once the changes are done, then the follow-up evaluation measures and supports that and then the incentives follow.
So if people had those evaluations done in their houses years ago and then undertook some work just, say, this year, but after the grant program started, can they still call you?
They need to, the evaluation has to happen during this particular granting cycle. So if they have an older evaluation, the intention would be is that they should get an initial evaluation before they make those other changes. Because that way they can accurately reflect, or we can accurately reflect what changes actually happened during the incentive period.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And to wrap up for me, I think, is to thank you for your advocacy. That's key for all of us to keep reminding the other levels of government what needs to be done here locally and for your benefits that that has gained for our citizens and also for the environment. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be Joanne, but I think we're going to go to the Kitchener Waterloo Skating Club 2017-2020 Agreement and Steve Shear is coming up. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor Jorski. Mayor Jorski, members of council, distinguished guests. I'm just here to introduce the report briefly to you, Community Services 2006-19 Report. We're recommending to council to approve a new or an extended agreement with the KW Skating Club. That's both positive for the KW Skating Club as well as the city in many ways that will cover the next four years. They'll take this agreement from January 2017 to 2020 in December. And also with us in the crowd tonight, should you have any questions, is the past president of the KW Skating Club, Dr. Paul Mallett, and who was also co-chair of the negotiating committee on behalf of the KW Skating Club. So at that point, I will take it, turn it over to you. One other point I'd like to make out is that the, we've just heard tonight that the KW Skating Club has now officially reached to being the largest skating club in Canada. So they have the largest membership of amateur athletes and officials and volunteers teaching skating and it's right here in our community. So it's a great thing for us.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Steve. Questions from council? Seeing none, would somebody be willing to move the motion? Councilor Henry, Councilor Freeman, any further discussion? All those in favor? That would be all of us. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Paul. Moving along quickly here, is anybody here to speak on behalf of Lions Quest Canada at this point? Seeing none, we'll just pause on that and move forward. Next up is a formal public meeting. This is a formal public meeting to consider zoning bylaw amendment Z-16-10 Activa Holdings, Inc., part of 430, the Willmont Line. Any persons who want further notice of this application, including the passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located on the desk at the rear of the council chambers. There is more than one binder, so please make sure you're signing the appropriate one. Will the clerk please advise council of the method used to give notice of the meeting and the dates notice was given?
Notice was advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on September 8, 2016, and mailed or emailed on September 8, 2016 to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property, excuse me, to public agencies, to all persons who signed in or spoke at the informal public meeting held on July 18, 2016, and to all persons who requested further notice.
Thank you. The planner will now provide a brief overview of the application. Welcome, Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor Jorski, members of council, staff, and members of the public. The purpose of application Z-16-10 is to accommodate a two-car garage on 28 freehold townhouse lots within a suburban neighborhood on the west side of the city known as the Vista Hills Development. This involves, this application involves a site-specific provision to the existing zone to increase the garage 10.7 centimeters or 4.2 inches greater than that permitted in the bylaw. So staff are recommending approval for reasons outlined in my staff report, IPPW 2016-092, for reasons including that the request is minor, units are designed with additional emphasis on the front entrance detracting from the larger garage, that it will have a minor impact to the streetscape, and that little to no negative impacts are anticipated to the surrounding neighborhood. We believe the staff report to be fairly straightforward, so I don't have a presentation this evening, but ultimately I'm here if you have any questions. And of course, I'm more than happy to answer them. Also, I understand a representative of the applicant is also here this evening if there's any questions of a technical nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Does council have any questions of staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. I will now ask any registered delegations to come forward. First on the agenda is the Management Corporation of REAP, Prisata. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Jorski and members of council. My name is Mark Prisata, speaking on behalf of Activa Holdings. If you have any questions regarding this application, I would be happy to answer them.
Council have any questions on the extra four-inch-wide garage doors? Surprisingly, none, but thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Are there any other delegations who would wish to speak to this, who have not registered? Seeing none. I can conclude now. If there are no more delegations, this formal public meeting is concluded and the application is now open to council for a motion and debate. Would anybody like to consider a motion? Council Freeman.
Counsel, having considered all the written and oral submissions from the public and stakeholders and considered the professional opinions of planning staff, that council approves zoning bylaw amendment Z-16-10 430, the Willmont Line in accordance with Section 7, recommendations of IPPW 2016-092 for the reasons specified in Section 6 or the conclusions of the report.
Second, or Council Whaley?
With a comment that that means we approve the extra wide doors.
Yes. Any further comment or debate? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's all of us. We'll now move to 12B. This is a formal public meeting to consider zoning bylaw amendment Z-16-11 for 155 Caroline Street South. Any persons who want further notice of this application, including the passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located on the desk at the rear of the council chambers. Will the clerk please advise council of the method used to give notice of this meeting and the dates notice was given?
Notice was advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on September 8, 2016, and mailed or emailed on September 8, 2016, to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property, to public agencies, to all persons who signed in or spoke at the informal public meeting held on June 27, 2016, and to all persons who requested further notice.
Thank you. The planner will now provide a brief overview of the application. Welcome, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor Jorski, members of council and the public here tonight. For zone change application Z-16-11, I'll be giving a brief overview of the zoning request, the planning considerations, and conclude with staff recommendations. So the subject property is 155 Caroline Street South. It's owned by 155 Uptown Ventures, Inc., and it's located next to the new apartment building at 144 Park Street to the west. The Bauer Development is across Caroline Street to the east. Sun Life Parking Garage is to the south and to the north are the Catalina Townhomes. So in this photograph, you can see the subject property, which is generally about here, is adjacent to the 19-story residential development, as I said, that was constructed recently at 144 Park Street. This was conceived as, so 144 Park Street was conceived as the first phase and 155 Caroline as the second phase, almost a mirror image of Phase 1. So in 2013, a zoning bylaw amendment was approved for 155 Caroline Street and in 2014, a site plan approval was granted for a 19-story building with 178 units and 312 parking spaces. So the podiums and underground portions of the two buildings were intended to be physically and functionally connected and that's why the face of the podium you see here, I just took this a few days ago, looks unfinished. So the tower for Phase 2 does sit back here at the southeast corner of the site, next to Caroline Street, and it will be adjacent to the realignment of the Iron Horse Trail. So it's set back from Park Street and Allen Street. So the applicant wants to build an additional four stories and 36 bedrooms above what the site-specific bylaw that was approved in 2013 allows. So a total of 23 stories and 300 bedrooms, or up to 300 bedrooms. The zoning request is more specifically to increase the height to 76 meters and the density to 750 bedrooms per hectare. So when evaluating the height specifically, we looked at the transition the building has from other buildings nearby and to the low-rise residential neighborhoods to the east and west. The illustration here, which is in my staff report, has been drawn generally to scale. It shows the buildings and that it achieves the transition that the official plan really was designed to achieve. It basically has a stepping-down effect to the low-rise neighborhoods to the west and to the east. The tower's also been positioned on the podium in a way that maximizes its distance from Park Street and Allen Street and the house is on the opposite sides of those streets. It's got a slender tower. Its placement on the podium also helps with minimizing shadow impacts. It tends to tuck in behind the existing shadows cast by the building. I've shown the existing building in orange here. So the placement of that tower and the additional stories would be in this blue area where the, this is the tower for 155 Caroline Street. So in summary, staff found the zoning request to be consistent with the policy framework for height and density that is in our official plan. The height is less than the maximum in the official plan and can still achieve an appropriate transition to those low-rise neighborhoods with minimal shadow impacts. There are no changes to the site design, trail design, parking count, or servicing upgrades. Negligible increases in traffic or delays on Park Street. I do speak in my report about not needing the turn lane and the fact that not having that turn lane would have very minor delays and therefore, we don't feel it's warranted. There also isn't room at this point on Park Street to accommodate that. Additionally, development on the site allows for the shared facilities with 144 Park Street to be completed, the Iron Horse Trail to be reconstructed, and the bearing of hydro lines along Caroline Street. So staff are recommending the zoning request to increase the height to 76 meters and density to 750 bedrooms per hectare be approved. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Laura. Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none? Thank you very much. I will now ask any registered delegations to come forward. First up is Carol Weeby, MHBC Planning. Welcome, Carol.
Good evening, Mayor Jorski and members of council. For the record, my name is Carol Weeby. I'm with MHBC Planning in Kitchener and I'm here this evening on behalf of 155 Uptown Ventures, Inc., who own the property at 155 Caroline Street. Mr. Van Marren, the president, is also here this evening to respond to any questions that may arise after my presentation. As staff have indicated, the application being considered for this property is a zoning bylaw amendment to increase height and density beyond what was previously approved in 2013. More specifically, the application is seeking permission to add four stories and 36 bedrooms to the building. As a result, this will increase the height from 62 meters to 76 meters and increase the density from 660 bedrooms per hectare to 750 bedrooms per hectare. As Ms. Duer just noted, staff are recommending approval of the zoning bylaw amendment and we are in support of the recommendations and would like to highlight some key issues for council's consideration. When reviewing any planning application, it is necessary to evaluate the context of the current land use planning policies as they apply to the application. These policies, as you know, are established through provincial legislation and set out key parameters for all land use planning decisions. Provincial policy for municipalities in the region of Waterloo are set out in both the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe and in the provincial policy statement. The implementation of these policies is intended to be administered through local official plans, which set out general land use goals and objectives. The City of Waterloo official plan designates this property as Uptown Mixed Juice and it is located within the primary node of the city. Further, the lands are designated as high-density, which permits buildings up to 81 meters in height and densities up to 750 bedrooms per hectare. It is also identified as being within the city's urban growth center. The official plan identifies high-density intensification within the urban growth center and states that a significant share of the city's future growth is to be located in this part of the city. The application being considered for 155 Caroline Street is in compliance with the policies that are set out in the city's official plan, the region of Waterloo official plan, the growth plan, and the provincial policy statement. It was on this basis, through a due diligence exercise... It was on this basis, through a due diligence exercise, that we were satisfied that the proposed height in height, the post-increase in height and density was in compliance with all applicable planning policies. This was further confirmed through consultation with city and regional staff. As a result, the amendments required would be limited to the zoning bylaw in order to change some of the site-specific regulations that were approved in 2013. As noted, the previous bylaw allowed for the development of a 19-story building with a density of 660 bedrooms per hectare. In reviewing the written comments that have been submitted, there have been some concerns expressed about the increase in height and density. One homeowner felt that the condo boom, as it was characterized, would affect the charm of the surrounding neighborhoods. Another homeowner felt that there was no community benefit by allowing the additional increase in height and density. I would like to comment briefly on these concerns. Firstly, as noted in the staff report and through my comments, the city has already set out height and density targets in your official plan. The purpose of establishing areas of intensification is multifaceted. These policies encourage more walkable neighborhoods by increasing residential densities close to employment, shopping, and public transit, thereby reducing vehicular traffic. The policies help to support uptown businesses by increasing the number of people within close proximity to many of the shops and restaurants. These policies create less pressure for growth at the city's edge, which is currently constrained by its municipal boundaries. These policies also provide housing choice for residents who wish to live within the city's uptown core, and they also fulfill the city's obligations to meet provincial growth targets and set clear parameters as to how and where intensification is to occur in the city. The city's official plan policies also establish appropriate mitigation measures to address impacts from high-density development on surrounding lands. As was noted at the informal public meeting and discussed further in the staff report, the increase in height results in minimal shadow impacts on surrounding properties. The increase in traffic is also marginal, expected to result in approximately eight additional vehicle trips for the morning and afternoon peak periods. The City of Waterloo finds itself in an enviable situation in terms of its employment growth, a very healthy uptown, vibrant neighborhoods, ample green space, and a thriving arts and culture scene. This in turn makes the city very attractive for people looking to live and work in such a great community. In order to accommodate both the population and employment growth that is expected, it will be necessary to increase densities from historic levels, and the uptown growth center is to be one of those areas where a significant amount of growth is to be accommodated. It is apparent that there will be some growing pains, as we see a physical transformation in the uptown. One of the most obvious changes that we're all seeing is the introduction of LRT, which is intended to encourage infill and intensification along its route, thereby creating more efficient use of land and resources. There are really only a few ways for the city to accommodate its growth projections. It either has to increase densities throughout the city as a whole, or identify key areas where a greater proportion of growth will be directed. The City of Waterloo's official plan chose the latter approach and identified specific areas within the uptown growth center to receive a substantial amount of that growth. This is to be accommodated primarily through high-density levels of development. And as noted, the official plan also sets out policies to maintain and protect stable low-density neighborhoods by allowing for a transition in height. By having strong land use policies that are set out in your official plan, the city can achieve an appropriate balance while meeting its obligations for provincial policy objectives. In summary, the proposal by 155 Uptown Ventures, Inc. meets all of the objectives set out in the city's official plan, as well as regional and provincial policies. From a planning perspective, this is exactly what is envisioned for an urban growth center. There are many community benefits by encouraging people to live and work in the core, and we sincerely hope the Council will recognize this by approving the zoning bylaw amendment for this property. Thank you very much, and I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you Carol. Do I have questions from Counsel for the delegation? Counselor Durrell.
Through you Mayor Jaworski, thank you for coming in Carolyn. Appreciate the speech. One of my questions I had was, this development has parking on the main floor, and one of the things that I continue to ask and hope to see in the future is bricks and mortar retail on the main floor. Can you give me an update on what's happening as we see this in front of us today? It's still parking at this time.
Through you Mr. Mayor, and we did touch this briefly through the informal public meeting. At present, the surface parking lot, which serves as an overflow parking for the Bauer project, when the property was acquired from the same owner, there was an agreement put in place that 60, those 60 surface parking stalls on the property would continue to be used for overflow, and that agreement is in place. But the zoning bylaw for the original 155 Caroline application made provision to allow for the conversion of those parking spaces to retail, and that will really be probably market-driven more than anything. And one of the advantages of allowing additional development in this area was that it will create more people. It will create a greater population density that will support the uptown businesses. And right now, there just simply isn't enough population density to support that level of retail, but certainly provisions are in place to make that happen, and I think we're all optimistic that it will occur at the appropriate time. So there's nothing in the bylaw that would prevent that from happening.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, thank you very much Carol.
Thank you.
I don't have any further registered delegations, but is there anyone here present tonight who wishes to speak to this application? Please step forward. Come on forward and state your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes.
My name is Richard Mangeson, and I'm the President of 144 Park Board, and I'm here representing them tonight, and I'm also here as a resident of 144 Park. Honorable Mayor, members of Council, city staff, thank you for allowing me to speak in support of 155 Caroline Street 23-story project. Completion of 155 allows our project at 144 to be completed, ensuring our visitor parking, which has just been mentioned, and many shared agreements with 144 Park to actually be legally executed. Personally, I've paid the City of Waterloo four parking tickets for my cleaning lady, and I'd love to have those visitor spots in our building. Your parking meter maids are on their job. It also will enhance the complete neighborhood with a luxury facility and part of, part two of our 144 Park, so it'll complete that whole area bordering Park, Allen, and Caroline. Upgrading the Iron Trail as part of this deal for Caroline will be special. The landscaping planned is excellent, and not only will our building be able to use the trail, but all the City of Waterloo people adventure down our trail, so it's very much appreciated. One of the challenges in our area currently is a limited parking for business. 155 project provision for parking in the area is just a must-do, and so for that alone, we are looking for that to help the businesses in the Bauer loft and Vincenzo's in particular, they drag a big crowd in there, which is good for them, but we need the parking spaces. And last but not least, 155 will help in part to fulfill the City of Waterloo's vision to increase the density of downtown area, driving the tax base up and allowing more services to a great downtown. As a resident of 144 Park, we enjoy dining, shopping, and walking to all these shops without taking our car out of the garage. Thank you Counsel on behalf of 144 residents for your continuing, your development of Waterloo Core. It's a great city and getting better with projects like 155. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the delegate? Seeing none, thank you for speaking up. Last call for any delegates who wish to speak to this application. Seeing none. If there are no more delegations, this formal public meeting is concluded and the application is now open to Counsel for a motion and debate. Counselor Durrell.
I'll move the motion?
Okay.
Do I have to read this yet? Okay, so here we go.
Go ahead.
So, when moving a motion, having considered all written and oral submissions from the public and stakeholders and considered the professional opinions of planning staff, counsel approves zoning bylaw amendment Z-1611, 155 Caroline Street South, in accordance with Section 7, recommendations of IPPW 2016-077, for the reasons specified in Section 6, which is the conclusions of the report.
Do I have a second or for Counsel Durrell's motion? Counsel Henry. Anybody who wants to speak to it? Counsel Whaley? Oh, Counsel Durrell, sorry. Do you want to go first Counsel Durrell? You want to back clean up?
I'll go last.
Okay.
As a frequent critic of bill form in the community, I have these remarks Mayor. In this case, I really did appreciate the extra work around understanding shadow implications, which concluded negligible impact on surrounding buildings compared to the previous approved building. As well, the architectural enhancements of the top four stories is noted and appreciated.
Thank you Counsel Whaley. Counsel Henry, oh Counsel Freeman? Did you have your hand up Counsel Henry? I didn't see. No, well Counsel Freeman.
Through you Mayor Jaworski. So I just wanted to say that I was vocally opposed to the original development that came to this counsel on this property. The parking piece still really bothers me because there's lots of parking at the Bauer Building. I don't know why people don't know they can park underground, but they can park underground, and there's lots and lots of parking there. But, you know, the aspect of the parking, the aspect of the trail, the aspect of the things that I was very frustrated with, I can't change in this application, and I understand that. What is being proposed, as Counsel Whaley pointed out, is a negligible difference to what this counsel has previously approved, and so I'm willing to recognize that and support that, this application tonight.
Thank you. And before I turn it back to Counsel Durrell, I think we really have a unique situation here on our hands. I know the disappointment in the community when there was the problem with the second building, and having somebody to come forward and complete this connection to 144 Park, complete the connection to the Bauer Building, and to finish off this project in our community is definitely appreciated. Counsel Durrell.
Thank you. I think, all in all, first, I think I'd like to acknowledge the developer because we were stuck with a half-built building in uptown Waterloo, and I don't, none of us thought that would ever happen moving into this. I know our staff worked really hard on the initial development to make sure that the trail was right and that it was the right building, and when that fell apart, I think we, it was a good two years before this came through for us. So thanks for believing in uptown. I know that it was a tough, a tough building, and I know a lot of people kicked, kicked the tires on that one, so above all, I'd just like to say I appreciate you finishing this off because that wall kills me every time I walk by it. So this is a thoughtful development. It's a, it's a community building development. You know, the concerns that were brought forward last time, I think, you know, one of the things I can say with 144 Park is there's been very little traffic, extra traffic that we've seen in uptown. We do have a little bit of construction happening in uptown, so who, you know, but, you know, eight cars at any time will be very little impact. And I think this is the right, I think I said this before, but it's the right, right development in the right place. I look forward to the day that we can walk in and get a coffee at the corner of Allen and Caroline, and I'll continue to ask about that every time. But I'm pleased to see that this will be passed unanimously, I believe, and welcomed uptown.
Excellent, thank you. Seeing no further comments, I will call the vote. All those in favor? That's five. Press gentle view. And thank you very much to Joel and Natalie and Laura for bringing through two more formal meetings. Always appreciated these takes, many months, years, and so thank you all very much. I did not see Joanne McQuiggin come in, so we'll leave Joanne for another day. We have regional information correspondents. Under new business, or unfinished business, under new business, we have the Navy League Tag Day request, and I think we need a motion for that. Is that correct, Clerk? Yeah, moved by Counsel Freeman, seconded the Navy Tag Day by Counsel Henry. All those in favor? That's all of us. Anything else under unfinished business, Counsel? Counsel Freeman?
I guess it's kind of under other business. Is that where we are?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. It's just with regard to the powwow that happened on Saturday at Waterloo Park. I wanted to thank Mr. Bowman. I know he was here earlier, but he, he's, the work that the city has done in conjunction with St. Paul's College around that powwow has been great, and it was a really good event. We were lucky too that the weather was stunning. Counsel Henry reminded me that he needs to wear more sunscreen next year when he goes. But one of the things that I thought was missing was, they have a flag presentation. They walk in the flags at the beginning of the powwow, and I really think that we should donate a City of Waterloo flag to Sean and Amy Smoke, so that they will have that when it starts, especially if we continue to be the strong partner in that event that we were.
Let's look to Mr. Rapp and see what he has to say.
Certainly through you Mayor Jaworski, to Counsel Freeman, we'd be happy to provide a flag for that purpose. I have a supply of them available in IPPW, so I can make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much Counsel Freeman, great idea. Anybody else have any further business to discuss? Seeing not, I'll look for somebody who wants to enact some bylaws. Counsel Freeman, Counsel Durrell, all those in favor? That's all of us. Motion to adjourn. Counsel Whaley, Counsel Durrell, all those in favor? That looks like all of us, if Counsel Henry moves a hand. There we go. That's all of us. Thank you. Thank you all.